This conference will now be recorded.
Okay. The Town of Clinton zoning board of appeals regular monthly meeting Wednesday, May 7, 2023 is now being called to order. Welcome.
Hey, the meeting date, you misread the meeting with date?
Seventeenth, twenty twenty-three. Yes, is called to order at seven o'clock. Actually, it is now seven oh two PM. Sherry, would you please take attendance?
George Dorre. Dennis Urmsher. Drew Richards. Bertram Schmitz. Bert, we cannot hear you. Bert Schmitz is on the video but is having technical issues. Lori Jaffe.
Here.
Maureen Noonan.
Here.
Tom Schultz. Dylan Walter.
And I guess Bert cannot hear us like last month when he.
I was gonna say.
Thumbs up.
We cannot hear you.
So one of the, one of the things for a purpose of the quorum for holding a public hearing and being able to deliberate or have members ask questions, we really want to make sure that we have audio and video. Bert, are you able to call in under audio?
Does he need to log off the computer and then call in? Will we get that feedback? Otherwise, I don't know.
As long as he turns the audio on his computer to mute and he just calls on the phone, we should be fine.
Bert, do you need the telephone number? Yes, okay. Sherry, do you want to read it to him off the agenda? The phone number to call in?
Sure. Oh.
Oh, you got it? Looks like you got it.
Tom Schultz has joined the meeting.
Okay.
Hello, everyone.
While we're waiting for Bert, can we at least, can we see Maureen and Tom since they're here?
Yes. Let me just, okay.
Okay. We need to see, um. Let's do Tom for either Drew or Dennis and Maureen for the other.
You have to tell me which one you want to see it for.
See, we call, let's do Tom. For Dennis. And Maureen for Drew.
And you need to appoint an acting secretary.
Well, since we, we had asked Maureen to do it last month and she graciously did. Tom, would you be secretary?
It's.
I think it was just about reading. Well, Sherry can tell you what it would involve. If not, if you don't feel you can, we may have to, I may have to ask Maureen again, but.
Would you prefer to have Maureen?
I would actually.
Okay.
Because I don't have any, well, the documents are here against, but.
Okay, so you can't, so Maureen, would you be so kind as to do it again? I don't know if I can ask Bert because I don't know if he's going to be able to speak.
Thank you, Maureen. I. Sorry.
Document, is it?
Well, yeah, I printed off, I printed off the notice of the public hearings. I could read that, but if, we just need to name someone as secretary. Would you be willing to do that tonight?
Sure.
Okay, thank you. So now we're waiting to see if, well, we have.
You have five people now.
We do have five. We have.
Yeah.
All right.
You have Bert, George, Lori, Maureen, and Tom.
I think the issue, Sherry, was, was whether or not Bert without audio is, is present to, for, for the purpose of the hearing. So you, four, is whether or not without the audio, you know, Bert is, is present to participate in the hearing. So I also think there's an opportunity for the applicant in terms of four versus five members to weigh in about.
We have five, we do have five.
You do? Okay, maybe I'm, I'm miscounting.
We have George, myself, Bert, Maureen, and Tom Schultz.
Okay, so I was not counting Bert for that purpose since he does not have the audio connection.
I'm sorry. We have me, oh, I see, okay. Okay, I see. We have myself. George, okay, I see what you're saying. Okay.
Can Bert phone in? This is Carrie Olson. Can Bert phone in?
I believe he's trying now. Kathy's trying to talk him through it.
Okay, because we can see him. So if he can use his.
We did have this issue last month and that, we can maybe discuss that at the last meeting.
If it gets to the point where we can hear him on his phone and see him on the camera, I think we're good.
Yep, it's the, it's the audio, it's the phone connection we're trying to establish.
Oh, okay.
I think he's, and, and you know, Carrie, this is sort of a, a point, there, there is, he has given the thumbs up in the past in terms of, of voting on, on things, but I think we want to be careful about that. So I just want to, you know, if, if you have a different opinion, if the phone connection doesn't work as to whether or not he can count as, as five going forward, that would be good to hear.
Well, as of now, he can. There is some legislation pending.
Right.
But as of right now, I think he can. It's, I guess my concern, and I would think the applicant's concern is, will he be able to express any questions or concerns that?
Carrie, hi, your audio is a little, at least to me, it's a little fuzzy, but maybe it's just my audio.
My audio or Bert's?
Yours, Carrie.
Mine is fuzzy?
Better now. It's better now. Thank you.
Oh, okay, because it looks like Bert's on now.
Yeah, I, I walked him through it on the phone and I, I'm hoping, Bert, can you, is that you calling in? Bert?
Somehow we lost his video, too.
Oh, dear. Bert, are you there? I can try him again. So, Abby, what you were saying in terms of the applicant weighing in, we do have four voting members and that's a quorum, right? It's also a quorum for if we reach the point of moving, you know, closing a public, having a public hearing, hearing the case, closing the public hearing and deliberating. But. So I, I don't know that five is required, but is your suggestion that the applicant may want to choose to proceed only when there are five?
Well, it's, it's really a question for the applicant. There are some that typically like to have a fully seated board of five members present to vote because of the, the number of votes necessary, should the board decide to go forward with, with the hearing for this, this application. Um, yeah, so, so if you, but I believe the votes relative to the substantial difference question is a majority vote. And so we could potentially proceed on that point. It looks like we may have Bert.
I think so.
Yep.
Yay!
Good job.
Okay.
All right.
Three computers running right now.
Thank you, Bert. Thank you, Kathy, and everyone who helped. So we are, we have five seated board members and we can proceed. And, and you will note the, the alternates who are seated, Sherry, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, let's move ahead, please, to the minutes, review and approval. Oh, I'm sorry, I need, I will read it. Maureen, if you want me to read the notice of public hearing, since I have it handy?
Yes, please.
Okay. Town of Clinton zoning board of appeals, Andrews Memorial Town Hall, 54 East Main Street, Clinton, Connecticut, zero six four one three. Notice of continuance of a virtual public hearing from April 19, 2023 to Wednesday, May 17, 2023, seven o'clock PM. Number one, ZBA 23 hyphen one in Cam, 23 Blake Avenue, Joe Wren, applicant, Roberta Kaufman, owner. Application for certificate of variance of sections 26.11.6 front setback and 26.11.14 maximum ground coverage for replacement residence. Assessors map 70 block 67 lot 54, zone R10. At said hearing, all persons will have the right to be heard and written communication received. The applications and accompanying maps are available for public inspection in the land use office of the town hall. There is an error here. George Door, chairman, Town of Clinton ZBA, but I'll note the person reading this is Lori Jaffe, chair of the Town of Clinton ZBA, respectfully submitted, Sherry Lee Hines, clerk, posted town clerk and website. Okay, the next item on the agenda. Are the minutes, review and approval of the April 19, 2023 meeting minutes. And I would note that a correction needs to be made to the minutes to state that Maureen Noonan was seated for Drew Richards. So Sherry, can that correction be made?
If you vote to do it, the vote, vote to make the correction.
Right, but I mean, you'll jot down the corrections. So I would like to ask for a motion to approve the April 19, 2023 meeting minutes as corrected?
A move? Is that a motion?
Yes. Would someone make a motion to, to approve the corrected minute?
So move.
Okay, and thank you. Could I have a second?
I'll second you.
Okay, that's Tom?
Yes.
Okay. Sherry, do you want to do a roll call on the vote, please?
George Dorre.
Yes.
Bertram Schmitz.
Yes.
Lori Jaffe.
Yes.
Maureen Noonan.
Yes.
Tom Schultz.
Yes.
So that's five voting and that's the motion is Carrie's. Okay, comments from the chair. I have a few brief comments. I was uncomfortable in the meeting last month on April 19, 2023 during the discussion regarding the public hearing for ZBA 23 dash two in CAM. One of the owners used disrespectful language, both in general and to me, the chair. I'm going to do my best going forward to keep discussions civil and on point. And to remind property owners to address their requests and comments to the chair. I'm also asking all board members to do their best to help property owners observe the rules and maintain decorum. For example, if an owner, property owner directs or asks a board member to speak, as happened on several occasions last month, the member should redirect those questions to me, to the chair, please. I'm also going to ask the staff to advise property owners when they come in for their, their meeting, to advise them of rules and procedures so that they know the rules that we follow and the order of the hearing, et cetera. So, thank you. Carrie, next item is new applications.
There are no new applications at this time.
Okay. Okay, we are now at the item number five on the agenda, continued public hearing. For ZBA 23 dash one in CAM, 23 Black Avenue, Joe Wren, applicant, Roberta Kaufman, owner. Application for certificate of variance of sections 26.11.6 setback and 26.11.14 maximum ground coverage for replacement residence. Assessors map 70 block 67 lot 54, zone R10, record ZBA 23 one viewpoint cloud. Thirty-five days to close public hearing, May 24, 2013. Now, before we proceed to the applicant's presentation, the board must determine first whether this application can be heard under Connecticut general statutes, chapter 124, section 8.6. At last month's meeting on April 19, 2023, Mr. Wren, the applicant, read from his April 5, 2023 letter, noting the alleged differences between this current application and the previous application that was, that had been denied. And the board voted to continue the public hearing to this meeting tonight so that the board could consult with town council about the request. So our first order of business is to determine whether this application is, quote, for the same variance or substantially the same variance, unquote, as the first application. If it is, if the vote, if the board were to decide after our discussion, now that it is, the board cannot hear this application pursuant to one, chapter 124, 8.6. Since our last, at, around the time of our last meeting and since then, the, the town attorney, Carrie Olson, who's on our call with us tonight, thank you, has provided language from several cases stating what must be shown. And Carrie is here, I would just note that there was language from several cases. And after I just read that, I will ask Carrie if she would like to further opine that administrative agencies are impotent to reverse themselves unless, one, a change of condition has occurred since its prior decision, or, two, other considerations materially affecting the merits of the subject, subject matter have intervened and no vested rights have arisen. Other language is the issue is whether there, there was, quote, substantial evidence in the record to show a change in circumstances. Carrie, since you're on the call, would you wish to say anything further about this issue that is our first issue tonight?
Lori, you did my job for me. I'm also going to apologize that I can't blur my background for some reason, so you're seeing my very messy office. Yeah, so the, the, what I provided to you all through that email was actually a cut and paste from a brief that I submitted to the Supreme Court in the Wickham Rise versus the Washington and the Wetlands Commission. But the law applies, and in fact, the original case upon which this rule was premised was the ZBA case. And so I cannot tell you how to decide whether this particular matter meets the, the requirements of the, or doesn't meet the requirements of the impotent reverse rule. That's up to you. But what I can say to you is that the law is very clear, and this Supreme Court case, which came down last year, which again reaffirmed this precedent, the notion is, is that if, if one ZBA board turns something down for a reason, and then two years later, when you have a new composition of the board, they come back and try to, try to do it again, it really undermines the whole premise of the first ZBA board's decision. And so the notion is that you have to believe that there is a significant changes to the application or the circumstances that justify looking at the same or similar application again. That is a decision that only you can make. I cannot make that decision for you. So what you need to do is to look at the two applications and compare what is being applied for and decide for yourselves whether you believe it's enough of a change to overrule a prior decision, right? Or if there's been other significant changes in circumstances that justify going back to it. And an example of that might be a change in the zoning regulations, you know, fundamental change in the zoning regulations that, that would justify looking at it again. So it's either a change in the application or some other significant change in circumstance that justifies going back and looking at a same or very similar application again.
Okay, thank you.
Is that helpful? Okay, I'll stand by.
Thank you. What I would like to do now is, I would like to ask this, every, the board members present tonight if they have any thoughts on this particular issue. I do, but I'm, I, as, as my custom as chair, I prefer to go last. I'd like to hear what the board has to say. So George, do you have any thoughts or comments about this issue as to whether the pending application is the same or substantially the same as the application that was denied? I believe it was in December of 2022.
I can't hear you.
We can't hear you.
Can't hear me?
Little better. Move in a little bit, please.
On this application, the ground coverage says.
Yeah, can't hear you. Can't hear you. Sorry.
I am now.
You hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, on this application that reduces the ground coverage by additional 1.5%, I'm saying that's minimal. The front yard setback nonconformity last application was reduced from 5.2 to 12.6 feet. On this application, it's further improved to 16 feet.
Good. Did anyone else have trouble hearing that or was that just me?
Yeah, it's just muffled.
It was muffled. Yeah.
I don't know why.
Could you just repeat in like a set, a couple of sentences what you said and please, I'm sorry to ask that, but it is muffled. It looks like other people are having a hard time hearing it, too.
Well, the ground coverage says.
If you're moving while you're talking, that might be part of it. If you stay close to the microphone.
This is the last time I'm putting up with it. Stay right now. This is what we mean to suck. I just listened to someone else, okay? Continue.
Okay. Bert, did you have any comments or thoughts about, about the, whether this application is for the same variance or substantially the same as in the first application?
Um, no, I don't have any.
Okay. Maureen, do you have any comments or thoughts?
I'd like to hear what George was trying to say. Is it possible for Tom to read George's notes?
No, I got, I'll, I'll try again, okay? They reduced the number, they reduced the number of bedrooms to four bedrooms from five. They, and the front yard setback nonconformity was improved overall from the 2022 applications, further improved to 16 feet, 3.4 foot additional feet. And the max, the ground coverage, the current application further reduces the ground coverage by additional 1.5%. I think they're minimal improvements, but that's exactly what it is. I just hear from someone else, get a better idea. But they're sort of minimal in my, my view for that substantial change.
Okay, all right, thank you. Maureen, go ahead.
I, I didn't have time to review the, I mean, if, if the items that George had stipulated, I would say that that, that would be significant enough to be able to review as a new applicant. Application.
Okay, Tom, any thoughts or comments?
Well, I'm, I'm kind of with George in a way. It doesn't sound like a big change, you know, but I also want to be careful and conservative about, you know, trying to maybe go back and compare them a little bit more thoroughly again to review them, just because it's an important decision. So that's kind of, I mean, my, my gut is that it isn't a big, a big change, a significant change, but, you know, just try, I want to try to be fair.
Okay. And have we missed anyone other than me? No, I don't think so. Okay. I have a little slightly different perspective. I think although some of the numbers may differ slightly, the numbers on the first application and the second application, I don't think that that is sufficient in itself to establish that the applicant isn't seeking the same or substantially the same variance. I don't think the applicant has shown a change of condition from December 14, 2022, the date that the board denied the initial application, to March 22, 2023, which I believe is the date signed by Ms. Kaufman on the application on file. And I don't believe the applicant has shown any other consider, a change in any other considerations materially affecting the merits which have intervened during that time. I just don't think that, that he has shown a change in circumstances. Now, although George is correct, five, the five bedrooms are reduced to four, but the living area is not being reduced. So I don't think that's a significant difference. The north side yard setback nonconformity was eliminated in the 2022 application, which was denied. So this is the same, is in both applications. In other words, that, the north yard setback nonconformity had been eliminated previously, that's not a change in condition with this application. Now, the front yard setback, which, which George mentioned, the front yard setback nonconformity has been slightly further improved. But again, I don't think this is a change in condition or something, a condition that has intervened, like a zoning change that has changed the circumstances. And in Mr. Wren's letter of April 5, he mentions it's a significantly safer structure than the first application, but I, again, I, I just don't see that that reflects a change of condition or circumstances. Like, for example, I don't think that, I didn't see, maybe I'm wrong, I didn't see that the building materials proposed in this application, for example, were different from those in the first application. I don't think there are any change circumstances reported by DEEP, the Land and Water Resources Division. And if we get, if we do proceed with this, we will discuss that further, but I'm not aware of any change, change circumstances reported by DEEP. I, I think it's, the applicant is seeking the same two types of variances, maximum ground coverage and front setback that were sought in the first application, which was denied. And despite the fact that there are a few, some, in one case, very slight 1.5% change, in another case, a little bit more of a change, but I, I personally think that is, it is substantially the same as the, the application that was denied. So those are my comments. So I don't know if. If the, if Mr. Wren would like to respond, or Carrie, if you have anything you would like to say before Mr. Wren has, has a chance to respond? Or, or, you know, address our comments?
Yeah. Madam Chairman, it's, it's really up to you as to whether you want to take comments from Mr. Wren at this point. But you do want to make.
Do we need to take, I mean, do we need to take comments? We heard, we did hear comments last month from his letter. What is your suggestion? I mean, I.
Again, this is a, this is a preference. I don't need to be obtuse, but. You, it is your right as to whether you want to allow him to address it and, and provide additional comments that might sway you one way or the other, you know, limited to the question of whether there is a significant change in this application. You know, we're not going to get into the.
Right, okay. What I would do then, what I, what I will do then is if there is a specific point, Joe, in one of our comments, one set of, of the five of us, any of our comments, but very limited, like, very limited, okay? You, you have the opportunity to do that if you would like. If not, we will proceed to, to take up the question. to, to take up the question of whether or not we will proceed to hear the case, the application.
Yes, thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
So yes, I will keep it brief. As you recall, last month, we went through the letter from April 5th.
But Joe, Joe, excuse me for interrupting, but I'm going to ask you to respond to, if you have a response to my comments, George's comments. I don't believe Bert had a comment and Maureen and Tom briefly did. So I'm just going to ask you to respond, really, just to anything that I said or any of the other two people said, okay?
I was always taught to preface what I'm going to say, so I was just attempting to do that. One thing I need to correct in what you had said, Lori, is you had said that there's not a reduction of floor area, but in fact, I don't know the exact number, Stu Lathers is on the Call the Architect, but it was approximately 10%. It was 2,200 and some odd square feet down to 2,000 and some odd square feet.
Excuse me, Lori, it's hard to, it's hard to hear. I mean, he's going in and out. I don't know if the tape's going to be able to pick him up.
And everybody else, hear me okay?
Yeah.
I'm going to suggest again, the closer you get to the mic, the better off it's going to be.
Yeah, yeah, I'm really close. It seems like everybody else can hear me okay. It's just the audio on Sheri's end, I'm not sure why. So just quickly, that GFA number, and then for the safety, we added noncombustible building materials on the north side or on the house completely. We added EAS box and we added a fire alarm system that were not on the plan back in December. So those are all the clarifications that I wanted to make in combination to the points made in my letter from April 5th.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much. Does anyone on the board have any, before we move to take a vote, does anyone else on the board have any follow-up comments or questions? No, anyone?
So, does changes in the plan, changes in the plans, is that considered changes in the application?
Well, how I read the information, Maureen, is the statements in the cases. It's not necessarily, I don't believe, just a change in numbers or change in some data in the in a application. I believe it's a change of condition, and I'm looking at the case law language that Carrie, Ms. Olson provided. The change of, unless, the change of condition has occurred since the prior decision or other considerations materially affecting the merits of the subject matter, or whether there is substantial evidence in the record to show a change in circumstances.
So it's not the architectural plans, correct?
That's true. I mean, what you are thinking about it, when you denied this application in December, and I wasn't a part of that, what was the basis for your denial? Did you deny it because you felt that there was not a sufficient hardship? And why? And if the changes that have been made to the plans now are significant enough that they're material to constitute a new and different application that justifies going back to and looking at whether, you know, your mandates are met as far as your determination, such as hardship. So it's all going to be related to what your original findings were and how whatever changes have been made, how they address the original reasons for your findings when you denied. Does that help at all?
Yes, thank you.
Any other comments by board members? No? Okay, all right. Does any board member wish to make a motion that the board hears ZBA 23 hyphen one and CAM on the basis that it is not for the same or substantially the same variances that were denied by the board fewer than six months ago?
I'll make a motion that the applicant at this time has not shown us any substantial changes.
Can't hear you, can't hear it, please.
I'll make a motion that we delay this in that the applicant has not shown to me and us substantial changes in this application to justify hearing it within the six-month time span.
Okay, well, George, but it wouldn't be delay it, it would be to not hear it, to deny, to not hear the case now.
To not hear the case.
Carrie, can we do a motion, it's sort of in the negative, but this is a situation where it would be moving to not do it. Is that proper form? Is that all right?
Again, under Robert's rules, they always appreciate that there should be, it should be a positive. The problem is, look at it this way, if George's motion is seconded and you don't get the votes in favor of his motion, now you've got to go back and do a motion to approve, right? So, but notwithstanding, it happens all the time, and I think George's motion should stand.
Okay.
So I didn't quite get the whole motion. George moved that the applicant has not shown substantial changes in the present
No.
Application.
Yeah.
No, not changes. It's, I believe it, the language.
Has not shown substantial change.
This application is not for the same or substantially, is for this. He's denying the application, that the application be, the request that it be heard on the basis that it is for the same or substantially the same variance that were denied previously? Carrie, does that sound like that? I mean, that's what I think he said, but.
It would have to be a friendly amendment because it was George's motion.
Okay, I can't, I would have to listen to the tape. I couldn't get all that.
Okay, George, you want to give it, could you just try and give it one more?
I don't think, I'll make a motion that this be not heard this evening in that the substantial changes.
That this application not.
Be heard this evening because substantial changes have not been made or met in this application as compared to the previous application.
Okay. All right, is there a second to the motion? Was that Tom?
Yes.
Is there any further, any further comments from the board before we vote on the motion? All right, so then, so then a vote, well, just in general, so a vote yes is a motion to not hear it, and a vote no is a motion to hear it, correct? Because of the way it was phrased.
Yes.
So a vote yes is in favor of George's motion to not hear it. A vote no doesn't necessarily resolve the issue. So we might have to address it again.
Why wouldn't we address the issue?
Because his motion was to not hear it. That doesn't make it a motion to hear it.
Okay.
That's why Robert's rules always say affirmative rather than.
Okay, all right. Sheri, could you do a roll call vote, and I'd like, please put me last on all roll call votes, thanks.
Yes.
Yes.
Maureen Noonan?
Yes.
Tom Schultz?
Yes.
Lori Jaffe?
Yes.
Five to zero to zero was the vote.
Okay. So the motion to, so the motion to not hear this application has carried.
That's correct.
All right, and now you're saying, as our counsel, that there has to be a motion now?
No, 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 because, because the motion was, the motion carried. The problem we would have had is if.
It has got it, all right. Okay, so.
We're good.
Okay, so this the ZBA, the application, ZBA 23 dash one and CAM, will not be heard by the board. And I'm assuming, do we need to have a separate vote on the CAM or not? I don't think so.
I don't think, because the CAM is tied to the variance, and if the variance isn't being heard, there really is no CAM application.
Exactly. That's what I thought, all right.
Madam Chair, this is Joe Wren, so we would like to extend the meeting to the June meeting, which then will be six months from December 14th.
Mr. Wren, as far as I read it, this application cannot be heard. So I don't believe in Carrie, Ms. Olson's on the line.
It can't be heard within six months, Lori. That's the motion you just made.
Well, that's right. But, well, then you, I don't know that you can just make a mo, well, you can't make a motion. How would that be? Would you have to, would Mr. Wren have to go in, you know, talk with the town staff and indicate?
He would have to at this point file an application that meets.
That's right, that's what I'm saying. It's not this current application. It's a new app, it's a new app.
Just, just so we can clarify for everyone, the timeframe, so should an application come in after June 14th? That would clear the six-month hurdle from the December denial. And I guess the only sort of question I have for the town attorney, if I may through you, through the chair, the, is this action to choose not to hear this application for lack of substantial difference, does that extend or affect that timeframe?
So, so I would say, so we're talking two different things. One is, when can you make an application again, right? And the rules are, you can't make the same or similar application within six months. You're still, when he comes back in June, going to be charged with the impotent to reverse rule. So unless this new application that comes in in June satisfies you that there is now a hardship or something different from what you denied before, you're still sort of under the weight of your prior decision. You have to address the application, you have to accept it now because it's beyond the six months. But will your ultimate decision be justified unless there are changes that meet the impotent to reverse rule?
So it has to be a new, it has to be a new application from the applicant, correct?
Application, and your consideration of that still needs to take into account the impotent to reverse rule.
Okay.
So what you're going to want to focus on when that new application comes in is what are the changes being proposed at that time? And do they reflect, you know, significant changes that justify a finding about, you know, you know, the hardship or whatever is being proposed, or other substantial changes in conditions that justify, again, changing your prior decision. And under those circumstances, you know, I don't know, depending on the differences and the setbacks that are being proposed, maybe you'll feel differently. But you still have to think about the impotent to reverse rule while you're addressing a similar application.
All right, so Mr. Wren, you will be, it's certainly up to you, but the next step, if you choose to do it, would be to submit a new application. After June 14th, correct, Abby?
Yes.
Okay.
I have a question related to that. So when is the application actually received at your meeting, or when it's submitted to Town Hall?
So the date of this, the date of receipt would be the next regularly scheduled meeting or 35 days, whichever happens first. And Sheri, if I'm, if I'm not mistaken, the deadline for the June meeting submittal is next week, correct?
Let me clarify that for you.
It won't be, it has to be after June 14th, correct? A new application can't be submitted before June 14th, correct? Okay, that's, is that a, it's a yes?
The cutoff for the June 21st meeting is May 24th. The cutoff for the July 19th meeting is June 21st.
But therein lies my question. So is the statutory date of receipt when the, when the board receives it at their meeting, or when it's submitted to Town Hall?
So, you know, that is a good question. I would think that as it's the date of receipt. But that's nuanced. I can look into that quickly while we're, while we're moving forward. But I would, I would argue that it's the date of receipt because that's the date that triggers the ZBA's. It's not the date that they handed to Abby. It's the date that it's received by the ZBA.
Right, but my read would be, it's, my read would be that it's, that date has to be after June 14th. So you can't, this will not be heard at the June 21st meeting because that's seven days after a new application has been submitted. That's not time for notice. So it seems that the earliest would be the July meeting?
I just, I just have to double check the statute and whether it's submission or it's the date of receipt. I just have to double, unless I have, you know, off the top of your head, because I.
Is that something also?
I want to say, I want to say it's receipt. Well, if, so if it is receipt, then we would, then if, if Mr. Wren submitted the application into the system, it was formally received at the, what is it, the June 21st meeting that would meet the June 14th piece. You have 65 days to open that public hearing from the time the application is received. So if it's received on the June 21st meeting, it could be, oh, the hearing could be opened in July. That would give time for notice and other, other pieces.
I would believe it's the date of receipt, to be honest, Lori. I would believe it's the date of receipt. But let me double check and just see if it says filed versus, you know, received.
Well, is that something, I'm sorry, will you?
I mean, you can pull my statute right now, and I can come back and.
Or is it also something that, that Mr. Wren can discuss with the town staff, you know, after this meeting, and you can advise him of the dates? I mean, it's up, it's up to you, Abby, and Mr. Wren. Would that be satisfactory, Mr. Wren, so that you can get all the information that you need?
Yes.
I'll send Abby.
If it's a date of receipt, then we could submit in May and receive it at June 21st meeting, which would be after the six months. That's where we're trying to go. Does it have to go in June, or does it have to go all the way to July? That's the clarification.
So staff can certainly work under the guidance of the town attorney and provide an answer.
Okay.
Since the deadline is a week from today, so that will be relatively soon, right?
But that is, well, that, not to beat a dead horse, but that is still, that is within six months of December 22nd next week, correct? That's the issue, whether it's receipt.
Right.
So, so we will, staff will connect with Mr. Wren tomorrow and after, you know, the advice of the town attorney and, and have a conversation so that you know as soon as possible.
But I also asked.
When was the first application received, Abby?
I'm going to need to go back into, Sheri, do you have that record up easily, or I can go back into the system and look?
The very first application, or the current?
The one that was denied in December. What was the receipt of that? Is that what we're asking?
Well, no, I think it's, well, the operative date, my understanding is the denial of that application, which was December 20th?
14th.
14th, I'm sorry.
So, okay, here you go. I'm reading right from the statute, and I'm, and this is why I always go back to the statutes, especially lately, because so many of them have changed. The quote from the statute is, "No board shall be required to hear any application for the same variance or substantially the same variance for a period of six months after a decision by the board or by a court on an earlier such application." So it's six months from the date of your decision on the first app.
Right. We, yeah, we knew that, but six months to do what, Carrie? When is it, when is it received by the board? Is it when we submit it to Abby at the Town Hall? Or is it formally received at the next regularly scheduled meeting?
So the way the statute is written is that you are not required to hear any application for the same variance, right? So if, let's say they rendered a decision on January first. Based on the statute, they do not have to hear any application, hear any application before June first. So, again, the point here is, you can make your application, but they're not going to be required to hear it or consider it.
Well, you, using our dates though, so that's consistent with what I was saying, using our dates, December fourteenth, twenty-twenty-two is when the denial was made by the board. That means they don't have to hear one until June fourteen, twenty-twenty-three. The next regular scheduled meeting is June twenty-first, which is a week later. So they would be able to hear it in June, based on what you just read.
Yeah, that would be the date of receipt, though, right? So if you filed, right? The date of receipt would be the June twenty-first meeting, and then a public hearing would be scheduled from there. If I'm understanding this correctly.
Yeah, I think, I think there's still some mix-up. So why don't you and Abby discuss it, get very clear on it, let us know, and then we will react accordingly.
Right, because, and one other piece. Joe, I see your question about whether it can be heard on the twenty-first, but there has to be, you can't file it until the fifteenth of June, right? Because the fourteenth is still within six months, I assume. And it's not enough time, pardon, excuse me, can I finish? And it's not enough time for notice. It's, it's not enough time for notice, correct, for two weeks' notice, or fifteen days' notice, to be heard on the twenty-first?
What Carrie just clarified is it can't be heard within the six months. That's what the statute said.
But it has to, the application, so the application has to be received first. And then it's scheduled for a public hearing. So if their next meeting is June twenty-first, that would be the date of receipt.
Okay.
The public hearing would be scheduled thereafter.
And we submit, we submit a month ahead of time to do all that, and then they receive it at their meeting. So that, that's.
They can't have the hearing on the same night of, as receipt.
Well, I think that's the question that.
I think, yeah, I think it would probably bear a conversation with staff and the town attorney tomorrow. And, and Joe, we'll get back to you, because I think we're going to go a little bit in circles tonight, if that makes sense for us.
Right. We can't have the hearing.
Like, what is this?
We can't hear it before six months after December twenty-second, meaning a full hearing. Okay, the stand, you will meet, you will all meet, and could you do us a favor? Abby, can you advise the board members by email when you've reached?
Yes.
Just advise us what's going on?
And I apologize, I wasn't involved in the original, so I don't have the time, dates in my head. So Abby and I will touch base tomorrow.
But it's only really, it's not the date, I don't believe it's the date when the first application was submitted. It's the date that the decision was, the denial was rendered.
I just read.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank, thank you all for your input, and thank you, Ms. Olsen.
No problem.
Okay, so the next item on the agenda, there is no deliberation and decision, because we did not hear, we did not have a, a full public, we did not hear this application. So moving on to the next item is new business, which the item that we have listed are the training topics discussion, which I hope all of you've had a chance to look at the very helpful handout that Abby prepared, making motions for the Board of Appeals. Carrie, sorry, Abby, would you want to go ahead and?
Sure. This is, so this is a, a document that we, that we generated after the last, the, the last meeting, where we were sort of talking about some supports and some tools for folks to use as you're going through making motions, crafting motions, and just making sure that folks sort of feel confident and have a formula almost to go through that process. So, so what we tried to lay out here is essentially kind of a four-piece motion concept, that there's sort of the what, where, why, and how. And to make sure that, you know, you have the building blocks as you're starting to craft motions for motions that are specific, that are tied very specifically to what's being asked for and, and decided, and tied to the plans that are proposed, so that it's not sort of a general, you know, sort of blankets, variance, but it's for a very specific reason. So we wanted to, to give folks some language for that, to make sure that the findings are very clearly articulated, that, that especially relative to the variances, that, that hardship is, is very clearly noted on the record, and, and whether you find that one has been proven or not. And then, you know, how to sort of make some conditions. The, the what part of this, I, I think is, is kind of important, and it relates to, I think, what Carrie was taking you through with the earlier motions from this evening, is that affirmative motion to, to sort of say, okay, we're, if, if you propose an affirmative motion, and it doesn't carry, then the application is denied. But if you propose the negative, then you've got to go back and, and make another motion to approve. And so you get caught in sort of a messy administrative kind of loop of, of how the meeting proceeds. Because, you know, then you kind of run into the questions, well, if it's, if it is denied, or, you know, if there's a motion to deny, and that doesn't pass, but the motion of, to approve also doesn't, you know, generate the votes, you get into kind of tricky territory. And so it gets a little bit messy. So that's kind of the reason for, for that affirmative approval or affirmative motion. What I tried to do here was give some notes about both, both conditions, but sort of how to craft it, and just some language you can use that you can, almost, almost plug and play. You know, what is the, the subject of the application matter for at least the, the way to structure the variance? And then since we've been having a lot of related coastal site plans that relate to ground coverage, or things that are particular to the variance that the ZBA has been hearing, making sure that we are, you know, continuing to tie that, you know, if the variance has, has been approved, then the CAM follows. If the variance denied, the CAM can't be approved. And so trying to kind of follow through those, those pieces. So trying to give you some language with that. So I can stop talking and see if anybody had any questions on this, or if, Carrie, I don't know if there's anything that you wanted to add or think about here, but it might be a little bit of a cheat sheet.
Yeah, Abby did send it to me, and I, I did add some of that language, especially about the affirmative vote. I, I just want to say that I respect, and I've witnessed this many times. Sometimes you'll have something that's so controversial that it's just a knee-jerk, nobody wants to say, I move to approve, right? And so that will happen. That will happen at times. But again, you do have to be careful, because a motion to deny that doesn't pass, doesn't resolve the application. Somebody has to go back and make a motion to approve, which then, if that's denied, then the application is, is done. But a motion to deny an application that doesn't pass still leaves it out there, because it begs the question. If you're, if, right, if you're not denying it, are you approving it? You got to take a vote. So.
Well, so then would that, does it mean then, that's why you recommend not ever bothering to make a motion to deny? Because we would have to go back, because I, in approval, because I know that early on, a couple of years ago, maybe in the last year, when I first got on the board, you know, our chair, our former chair, would, you know, he would call for, you know, does anyone wish to make a motion to approve? And I've done it as well in the last couple of months, and it's sort of silence. And then somebody will say, you know, I'll, you know, we'll get things rolling, I will make, I'll make a motion to approve. And, you know, often they usually, or often they pass, but sometimes they don't. So that sort of reinforces what, you know, you're, you're suggesting that we never do a motion to deny, right?
You should avoid.
The board doesn't feel, if our consensus seems to be from our discussion, that we aren't probably going to want to approve this, it still should be a motion to approve, and then people can vote no?
Yes. And, but again, I said, I appreciate, there's a knee-jerk reaction with some applications, where nobody just wants to say the word approve, and I get it. You just have to be aware that if you're in that quagmire, that a motion to deny that is not, does not get the majority vote, doesn't end the, the inquiry, because it's not a motion to approve. So a motion to deny that doesn't pass says what?
A motion to deny, if it pass, if it's five-zero, isn't that sufficient?
Yeah, but if it doesn't pass.
It's not a motion to approve. It's a motion to deny that does not get granted. And, and again, you as a board have a right to tailor any variance that you give to the specific hardship. So if somebody comes to you and says, I want a five-foot setback, you have the right to say, we're not going to give you five feet, but we'll give you four, because we think that's all you need to alleviate your hardship. Right? So it's a huge mistake to just let a motion to deny hang out there. It doesn't get approved, and suggests that that's, you know, somehow the end of the story. Because now you need to go back and do a motion to approve, and use all the tools in your tool belt to, to focus and massage what's being asked of you, to do your duty, which is to only grant what's necessary to alleviate what you perceive to be the hardship. And that's why I always stress that any variance that's granted should be tied to a specific site plan, building footprint, you know. There's a famous case where a zoning board of appeals granted an eight-foot side yard setback variance, right? And the proposal was to build a storage shed. So they said, okay, you get a, you get a setback variance of eight feet. Ten, fifteen years later, somebody comes in, and they want to put a second storage shed within that setback. The ZBA says, no, 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 we only meant to give it to you for that one storage shed. And you know what the court said? You gave them an eight-foot setback for that entire yard. You can't take it back. So it's really important that when you're considering the applications in front of you, that you truly structure them to make sure you're not doing more than necessary to alleviate what you perceive to be the hardship. And that's why I say you should always tie it to a plot plan. You should always, you know, be very specific and make sure that it's. Let's say if it's a front yard setback for a porch, that you're, you're clear that that front yard setback is only for the footprint of that porch, not the entire front yard, right? You need to think about these things, because down the line, it could come back to bite you. And, and Abby's terrific, and Kathy's terrific, so I know they can help you with these types of motions, but you should always be thinking about that. That it's, it's, your obligation is only to grant as much as is necessary to alleviate the hardship that you perceive, nothing more.
But, well, thank you. That's, that's very helpful. But the, but the applicant has to agree, right? And I know that since it's just the board now that's on the call, there's nobody else. We, it's something, it sometimes comes up where board members may feel comfortable with granting three variances are requested. And you all know that I'm talking about last week, last month. But there's an issue where some people, some board members had a concern about one of the requested variances. But the applicant, if an applicant doesn't want to do or won't do something that the board would approve them to do, that's, that's a different situation, I suppose, but we, you can, can we craft a motion and craft the granting of a variance, even though there's a, it's something that, that a property owner has not indicated that he or she will do?
Well, so certainly during your deliberations or discussions or the public hearing, it would be good to address those, those issues, so you know where it's headed. But you have, you have the right, as the zoning board of appeals, it's statutory, you have the right, it's statutory and it's case law, to modify the variance to address what you perceive to be the hardship. If they don't like it, they don't have to file the variance on the land records, or they can appeal it to the Superior Court if they don't like it. But your job, again, you know, the zoning board of appeals, variances, they're the antithesis of zoning. They're supposed to be sparingly granted. And I, again, I've been doing this long enough to know that oftentimes, as long as nobody's complaining, people just, you know, look away, because, you know, you, you want people to be able to use their properties as they see fit. But really and truly, there are very limited circumstances where anyone should be given a variance under the current law. Very limited. I mean, it's very limited. And, and, but I, you know, I don't want you to think I'm being critical, because every zoning board of appeals that I deal with tends to look at the, the big picture, and, and tends to sometimes give a little more than maybe is necessary. But I'm just, I just want you to be very clear on the fact that when you grant a variance, it needs to be very specific, or it will come back to bite you. Well, it may not come back to bite you and me, but it'll come back to bite the next ZBA down the road, you know, ten years from now, right? So you do want to be careful, because that's, that's your charge.
One, and one thing, you know, I would add on is, and we've talked about this a little bit in the past, but the, the timeframes for the application, you've got your sixty-five days upfront to, to sort of open that public hearing. You've got thirty-five days to close it, and then, and after it closes, sixty-five days to render that decision. And so if you are in deliberations, and you come to a point where you're, where you're realizing, look, this is going to be a complicated motion, we're, we're thinking the following, we would like to go in this direction. Staff, can we continue this to the next meeting, and will you please bring us a motion that we can evaluate? We can, we can help craft, and we can, you know, help give you, if you're, if we're directed to do that, we can give you something that, that reflects, you know, what you, what your outcome is, and we can kind of put it all together and give you something to evaluate at your next meeting. So, so we're here, we're here to help. And this, this formula is essentially what we use to say, okay, have we met all of the various boxes and pieces? And, and have we ticked, you know, have we ticked it all off to make sure the record is, is really, really clear? Because again, the clarity of records, you know, folks finish with their variance, and, you know, the second that appeal period clears, they're in Kathy's office, you know, waiting for a permit. And so we want to make sure that it's, that we can get that, you know, make it very crystal clear what they can and can't do.
And Abby, that's a very good point, because that's another thing I see often with zoning boards of appeals, is they feel like they have to make a decision that night. You know, as soon as you close the public hearing, okay, time for a motion. And, and sometimes, you know, it'd be better if you sort of sat back a little bit. You know, let Abby and Kathy help you. Let them craft, you know, give them direction on what you want to see. And then when it comes back before you, you can massage it, you can modify it, you can clarify it. But take your time. You know, you have, have statutory time. You don't have to clear everything off your plate that night.
Is it typical that towns?
Oh, and that's something that I agree with, and, and frankly, I'm, I'm hoping that, you know, some of my fellow board members will be a little bit more open to doing that, if we feel that there's, you know, that it's a complicated application, and it might be helpful for the staff to do that. But anyway, let's hear from other people on the, on the board. Thank you.
I was curious, in regards to other towns, is it typical that ZBA meetings happen once per month?
You know, it's really funny, because it, it does vary from town to town. In some towns, the ZBA doesn't meet for months at a time, because they just have no applications. I think, I think the problem is that you see with these coastal towns, you've got way more, you know, of the, the smaller lots and the, you know, setback requirements now. And so I think I see it way more in the coastal towns than I do in, you know, the backwoods towns. So it really depends. But most ZBA's typically are scheduled to meet every month. You set your schedule at the beginning of the year, you file it with the Secretary of State, and you say, we're going to meet the second Tuesday of every month, right? But oftentimes, some of the ZBA's that I work with have nothing on their agenda, and they may not see each other for, you know, two or three months.
I was curious, because I think part of the pressure to make a decision is that you don't want residents having to wait another month and holding off, you know, projects that they've already invested funds in. and holding off, you know, projects that they've already invested funds in, and, you know, they would obviously like to move forward with.
And again, that's all your decision and maybe it depends on the complexity of the application in front of you. Um, but I will say that if you're going to, to close the hearing and make those motions that night, please heed my advice and be very careful how you couch that motion and make sure that you tie it to a specific plot plan, a specific addition, a specific improvement. Um, you know, and that you cite that in the motion so that you don't find yourself in trouble down the road, uh, with cropping up.
I think there's, there's also sort of, I think that, you know, Clinton, like many coastal towns, I think has this push and pull between policy and regulation wheelhouse and, and the, the role of the ZBA. And I think a lot of times on these coastal applications, the, the, the ZBAs are being asked to essentially make policy through variances, which is kind of the backwards and not right way to do it. You want to, you know, we really want to get this stuff before the planning and zoning commission. If we see consistent requests for variances, the question is, is there something in the regulations that does not reflect the land use patterns that folks want to see now? Or are hoping to enable, um, and there's another conversation to be had there. So I think there, you know, as I'll put a plug in is that, you know, as these conversations with the coastal resiliency task force and the planning efforts that we're taking on, you know, up to, taking up with the planning and zoning commission as probably as a result of that, I think it's a great opportunity. Um, you know, to give some feedback and sort of say, look, we, you know, we see these trends and we think that there should be a look, a deeper look at the following issues. And I've got a running list, Kathy's got a running list. Um, and if there are things that you think that we need to be adding to, we can, we can do that too. But that way it's, it's, yeah.
It's a very good point, Abby. And I, I think, and in the coastal town, it becomes even more complex because you have the CAM, right? You have the floodplain regulations. It's, 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 you know, it's tough. It's a tough, you know, re- regulatory quagmire for some property owners on, in, that have coastal properties, especially if they're within a floodplain.
And I would say too, you know, to echo what Carrie and Abby said as well, you know, the section 13 of the zoning regulations specifically states, and Carrie said as well, there to be, variances are to be granted sparingly and you need to have a hardship. And I know as the EO, I get a lot of pushback in my office from people who were like, well, I want this, so I should be able to have it. And, you know, I get it from applicants, property owners, and I get it from agents. And, you know, you guys are all here to make your choices, but you need to be strong in that and, and make the decisions based on what you feel in, that you see in the, in the record and the application and the regulations. And, uh, I only say this because I know being at the meetings, sometimes some of the property owners and, and agents have been, um, inappropriate. You know, stay strong in whatever you find in your findings because, um, I, I've seen it in my office with myself too, where people can be quite, um, they push back on me a lot when I tell them they're going to need a variance. And unfortunately, if they don't meet the regulations, they need to come and, and get a variance. And that doesn't mean that they're going to necessarily get everything they want.
Right. And, and I get to that point, you know, as you know, I'm sure you all know, the variance is supposed to be tied to something unique about the, the property in question. It's not just, you know, I want, right? It's got to be tied to some unique feature of the property that creates a, a hardship that's not common to every other property in the zone. And to Abby's point, if you're seeing people coming in for the same variances over and over, and you feel it's a hardship, well, that's, that should be a regulatory change. That shouldn't be variant. Um, because variances are supposed to be tied to unique characteristics, um, unique hardships. Um, and so again, to that point, your input to Abby and Kathy, so they can go back to the PDC and say, maybe we need to look at these regulations, uh, is worthwhile. And the other problem is that some of it's going to relate to floodplain regulations in CAM. And I'm seeing a lot of this in, in towns that where, you know, they, people want to make substantial improvements to their properties without having to raise them. And we're battling about that constantly. So it's tough. It's, you know, it's hard in the coastal communities and people who are within the floodplain or waterfront, it really is, and I get it. But that doesn't make them unique and it doesn't make what they want necessarily a unique hardship in Kathy's.
I think what we see a lot of, um, are people who are not necessarily saying, uh, they have a u- hardship, the traditional hardship, you know, something unique about their property. You know, it's often, you know, the, the residents predated zoning. Well, I would say, I don't know how many hundreds of homes in Clinton or thousands would predate zoning, but reduction in non-conformities. And I think, I don't know how the rest of you feel, but you know, we see a lot of people who they can show that their, their property is unique because it's not. But they, they use that and there is, you, you know, shared with us and your insight has been helpful. You know, that can be a basis. I believe a lot of applications believe that is a basis, no questions asked. Um, so I think that's something that we as a board, I mean, I, that I get, you know, questions about, and I can't speak for other board members, but I think we see a lot of applications. They know that they don't have a unique piece of property, but they are seeking, you know, the, under this concept of a reduction in non-conformity.
Right. And I did remind you, it's not, it's not a given. You still have to decide whether you feel that it's justified. You know, they have to establish first and foremost that they're not creating any new non-conformities. But then you still get to decide whether the reduction in non-conformities justifies what they're asking for. It's not a given. Just because they come in and say, look, I've reduced this by, by, by variance. That's not the case. That's not the law. I mean, you wield a lot of power.
Tom, go ahead. You, you wanted to speak.
Uh, yeah, I, you know, just one of the things I've kind of observed over time is that you have private in, you know, uh, you know, you have planners, architects, you know, realtor people who are to my mind are presenting to their clients that, oh, we can make, we can build this thing for you. And that they're investing money and then they, you know, there's no guarantee that they can. And I was seeing comments, I'm not going to mention names, that were like feeling like, well, what are we supposed to, you know, that, that was asked of you, Laurie, what are we, what can we do to make this work? Kind of a thing. And, you know, to me, it just seems like it, it's a weird business because, you know, you have people who think they have hope that, oh, I can build this beautiful house al- along the water when it's, you know, not a good idea to have that happen. And they're being maybe sold or promised that, that this person can make it happen. And when it isn't happening, there's tension. So I don't know if anybody sees it what I'm saying or sees it that way, but I just think it's kind of a fascinating process.
Well, to your point, Tom, and it puts a lot of pressure on all of you because you live in this community, right? I mean, so it puts a lot of pressure on you and I get it. And that's why I think a lot of zoning boards of appeal, as long as nobody's complaining, they'll turn a blind eye. But if you're really doing your job, it shouldn't matter what they were hoping to do with the property. Because every wise property has an obligation to learn and know what is and is not permitted. And, and, um, you know, if they want, if they've got pie in the sky ideas on what they're going to do, it's, you know, incumbent upon them to look into it before they buy it, the property to make sure they can do it. And so.
Yeah, I understand. I mean, it just, it's kind of like, there's a weird ethics in, in all of this in my mind.
No, I get it. And you feel bad when they've spent money and, you know, um, the problem is that to get a variance, you do have to spend money because they've got to cut the plan.
Yeah.
I think, I think there's sort of an expectation that some people have that it's just, they're going to get it. And so they, they work on things with their applicants, you know, their, their property owners. And then they come in and they say, well, why didn't we get the variance? You know, and, and it's like, because you don't meet the requirements. It's, you're asking for permission to break the rules really. And there's, I think there's an assumption sometimes that, you know, it's just gonna, you're going to get it. Cause people have said to me in the office, well, you know, we used to get variances all the time. And, you know, I don't understand what's changed. It's like, well, if, if you, if you don't meet the requirements, you know, you, you can't assume you're going to get a variance. It's, it's not supposed to be that way.
And the law has gotten tighter on this issue too. So anybody that, that your response should be, the EMF decision was very clear. Um, and I, I just, I think, um, and there was a proposal for new legislation um, that would have given zoning boards of appeal basically more flexibility and, um, and it was shut down.
It was. I was going to ask you about that. It was shut down?
It was shut down. And so, you know, again, uh, the, the goal is that you're not, you're not the planning and zoning commission. You're the zoning board of appeals. You're supposed to be making sure that Kathy and Abby are doing what they're supposed to be doing and granting variances when they are justified. But as Kathy said, it's a license to break the rules and it should be sparingly done and not just.
Does anybody, um, have any other, anyone who hasn't spoken, have any thoughts or questions, um, about any of this, all of this material? Good food for thought.
I'll, I'll ask one because I've, I've brought this up with Carrie before and with Abby as well. Um, but I just, you know, want to mention it to the group. So Carrie, as you were talking earlier about the flood, I know it's been really difficult on the ZBA members when they get an application and it's to, you know, ask for setbacks or something, maybe a flood compliance structure. But the CAM says, you know, that the report we get from the state is, we do not recommend this. This, this has adverse, you know, uh, you could have adverse, you know, a lo- a lot of language kind of strong suggesting that could be potentially dangerous or harmful to, uh, to mute Burt. There, I just muted Burt. Um, so I guess my question for the ZBA is how do they handle that? Cause I know it's so hard for them because they have the app agent asking for the variance. They have CAM saying it's not a good idea, but at the same time, it doesn't necessarily, like if, if there's a CAM's concern about ex- extra living area, for example, and it's still within the regulations, it's not necessarily something needed a variance for, but they're getting that, that very strongly languaged worded document from them. How, how do, how do they, they're really between a rock and a hard place a lot of the time.
I'm dealing with this in another coastal town and they're struggling with the same thing. It, it's all about the regs, you know? If you're going to start putting the onus on people to not increase their living space, even going up or, you know, because it's not, it's not being recommended by CAM. It needs to be in the regs because people need to know what they can and cannot do because it's not fair for them not to know. Like I said, if you buy this property, they should be able to go to the town hall, look at the regulations, look at the building file and, and, and be able to determine based on the regulations, what they can and cannot do legally. So, um, and I'm telling you, because you're not the only town. And I've got another, you know, ZBA or plan, and, uh, actually, is it, is it the ZBA or planning zoning? You know, because they, they've got deep, you know, telling them, don't, don't do this. You know, you're, you're, you're allowing somebody to build something that's, you know, in the, in a situation where, you know, um, there could be a flood and there could be loss of life and there could be, you're right, somebody wants to add a bedroom or something. And it's tough. It's really tough. But it needs to be in the regs.
Did anyone else want to, um, make any comments? Thank you again for, um, Carrie for, for giving us this information, also for the staff, Kathy and Abby. Everyone for comments. I know it's something that, that I struggle with and I, I imagine some of you do as well. Um, and, and again, Abby, thank you for preparing this, um, this handout. It's very helpful. Um, and if we have any questions about it, I assume we can come back to it at some point.
Was that, was the handout emailed to us?
I think it was attached to the agenda, uh, the email that Cherry sent out, right? Cherry with the email of the agenda and.
It was, I sent it out at least twice.
Yeah.
Okay.
We can, we can reset it tomorrow too, if we need to.
Yeah, it was sent. Yeah.
Well, it was nice to see all of you. I hope you have a lovely evening.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, let's see, the next item is, uh, any, uh, correspondence, Cherry or, or Kathy or Abby? Is there any correspondence we need to know about?
I have none.
Nope. Okay. Okay. Um, next item is additions to the agenda for the June 21st, 2023 meeting.
Okay, uh, we have, the closing date is next Wednesday. At this point, we tentatively have an application, but it's not complete. And, um, staff is talking to the agent about this.
Mm-hmm. Okay. And, and that's it?
So far.
Okay. Okay. Um, I guess I should have asked if there's any other new business, uh, other than the training topics. Nobody has any other new business? Okay. Um, and then I guess we are ready to adjourn. Um, would someone like to make a motion to adjourn?
I'll move.
Okay, a second.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Abby, I have a, or Kathy, I have a question before you guys leave.
Oh, okay.
Just let me write down the German tape.
My, my sound is not coming through anymore. It's started to just fade out. I don't know if I have an internet issue here, but maybe Kathy can answer.
Yeah, I can hear.
Okay, the question is, I still do a legal notice of decision and then just put in the, do I do a legal notice of decision? And if I do, I just.
Let's, let's talk tomorrow. Yeah.
Okay, I, I won't be here until mid afternoon. So if you need a legal notice of decision, maybe, um, Kathy can do it or Kathy can do it. Uh, I have, my daughter's to doctor's appointment, so I won't be in till probably mid afternoon. And the cutoff is nine AM tomorrow.
Oh, okay.
I'm, I'm getting every fourth word.
Okay, I think Kathy heard it.
I did, yeah.